That came up, Mr. Messer had brought up, and I'll ask if he would like to add anything to this, but ensuring that our contracts with vendors were based on equity, similar to the equity policies that we hold so dear here, i.e., are we doing business with people that have the same values that we have for our school kids and for the city? And so, we directed administration to look at the potential, drafting a potential policy that would speak to that, sort of an equitable vendor relationship policy, I think. And then lastly, we had a pretty robust discussion about Board Policy 8400 and school safety. It wasn't so much around the policy itself. I raised some concerns about recent research I have been reading and been compelled by that says active shooter drills may actually have an adverse, a negative impact on students. While we want to make sure our kids are as safe as possible, are we causing undue trauma with the way we administer active shooter drills? And so, our general counsel, Dan Hoing, said he'd be happy to bring some of our school safety experts and safety personnel to our next meeting so that we could ask them these questions directly. I think my concerns were shared in certain respects by both Member Messer and Bowers. So while the policy itself, we didn't necessarily have any issue with, we did want to have a longer conversation and focused around what sort of leverage or leeway do we have as a school district independent of Ohio Revised Code to affect the way we administer those drills? Because Ohio Revised Code says you have to do fire drills, certain drills, you have to do these shooter drills, but how do we have to do them was the question. That pretty much wraps it up, I believe, and I present the minutes as written.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments about that report? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, if I could just give just a little bit more context, and Mike represented that, or Board Member Morosky represented that very well. But what that stemmed from was in Finance Committee, we reviewed all of the agreements with vendors that were, is it 100,000 or was it 200,000? 200,000 and above, and a district as large as ours, that's a lot of contracts. And some of the things that we talked about through each and every one, and I think this is important for the community to understand, we were challenging each budget line owner to ensure that we were looking at women-owned business, minority-owned business, that we're looking to work with locally-based companies. I think it's a pretty interesting practice, that we're trying to make sure that our dollars are creating jobs and creating opportunities for people that are representative of the students that we serve. But as we kind of got into that, the idea came that what if we could ensure that the organizations we partner with also adhere to the same equity policies that we have? In essence, we're voting with our dollars that the world should operate like CPS, that all children should be treated equally, no matter any of their differences, we should be treating them all equally. So this would be an idea to kind of bring that in line, as many corporations nationwide have also done.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present the Ad-Hoc Committee meeting from January 18th.
Yes, thank you. I present the report of the Ad-Hoc Committee. We met this past Saturday, and the main topic for work and discussion were the review of the board bylaws and policies and committee responsibilities. What we also did in the redlined version that you have, that you can review and we will approve or discuss at a later date after you're prepared to do that, since you just got it at your seats this afternoon, we incorporated the work of the prior Ad-Hoc Committee into this document, and we made additional changes and revisions, because the document that was on record in the board office didn't include the work of the prior Ad-Hoc Committee. So, that's also redlined in here. So you'll be able to see the changes that were made from the last policy and bylaws that was fully approved way back when. Anyway, the most significant area of revision that I would like your review, and maybe even immediate feedback, because tomorrow Health and Safety is meeting, and we don't have approved bylaws for that committee, since that committee was added for the, just for the public's information. We aligned our committee structure to the strategic plan. So there are five sections of the strategic plan, there are four committees that follow the five sections, the one committee, the one section of the strategic plan that deals with community and public engagement is incorporated into the four committees. So, the new committee is Health and Safety. Board Policy 0150, page 6 of 9, we removed, or I removed actually, because I was charged with developing a charter for the Health and Safety Committee, which is included in here. Letter D, which pertained to health and safety of children, on page 7 of 9 of 0150, they are now part of the responsibilities of the Health and Safety Committee, along with several additional items. Not to say that if we have our meeting tomorrow and use this as a template, that this is set in stone, we've not yet voted on it, we can remove items, we can add items whatever we please, but I just wanted to draw your attention to these responsibilities, because tomorrow, we're going to need to have some guidelines as to how we're going to set up our committee and develop our work plan.
Okay, questions or comments? And board members, please be reminded that we haven't had a chance to read the revised versions, so hopefully your question, we want to file the report, but, so we may not be able to respond to all questions about the changes.
Right, can I, let me just finish my report before we take questions.
Okay, I thought you were finished.
No, I'm not quite finished.
Okay.
So, upon approval of the bylaws and policies of the board, I believe that our work will be completed, but as of now, I am recommending that we continue this committee in the event that the board wants to refer work back to this committee, based on what you're receiving today. Or you may think it's ready for the full board, then we can dissolve the committee, but as of right now, I believe that our work isn't finished until the board completes and adopts new bylaws and policies, unless there's dissent from the rest of the board.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you for the work, appreciate it, and thanks to board staff for including the last Ad-Hoc efforts. I know we had them, I think, in the board office, but they were not necessarily posted properly on the district website, if I recall, and thanks for making these additions. I think having a full board discussion after the, at least the first month, maybe the first two months of the committee meetings, would be good to actually plan a vote on this new approach, because as things are removed from a committee, the committee probably needs to agree to those removals, or agree to the adds, or whatever, but definitely it'd be great to have a full board discussion after these committees meet in January, and then plan on an actual vote on this policies that you've put forward in February, after that's been adjusted. So thanks for the work.
Yes, any other questions or comments? Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have said two. So when we pass on this today, we are only passing on the minutes, not the attachment.
No, we're accepting this, we're not passing it. You accept minutes, you don't approve minutes.
Okay, we're accepting the minutes, but we're not necessarily accepting these changes.
We're accepting that you receive that, great, but we're not approving the policy.
Good, so we accept the minutes and we received this attachment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. I hope everybody is clear. I think so, and we've gone through several iterations of this particular conversations. We want the minutes to be on file, as having been presented to the board, but we still have work to do on the content of it, which will come up again, as Ms. Bates stated. Any other questions? Mr. Morosky?
I was gonna second, in some respects, what Board Member Bolton said, and also extend my thanks for all this work. This isn't easy, and it's pretty wonky and the weed stuff, so thanks to the Ad-Hoc Committee for doing it. And upon initial appraisal, I think it looks really nice. So I would, of course, like to have time to really look at it, and I would just note that in student achievement, Chair Bowers, teaser, you'll find that out in our minutes on Monday, Chair Bowers led an awesome meeting, and at our next meeting of February 7th, we're gonna talk about what items on the SAC work plan could transfer over, and I certainly see some here, so, yeah, I think it's fine to vote on the acceptance of receiving them, but then next time, talk more, maybe in full, about the whole document, but I do appreciate y'all looking through this, particularly the part about board onboarding. I saw some interesting things there, that'll be helpful for future people.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let me get a motion to approve and file the minutes as presented.
Accept.
Accept the minutes, as written, so moved?
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the room.
It's a voice.
Oh, I'm sorry, voice, voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. Okay, does anyone have any kudos? Mr. Messer?
Yes, I think some of the best compliments are when things are just given to you, when people have no idea, any background knowledge of your connection to the district, et cetera. And I was taking a Uber to the airport for a work trip, and got in the car from a man who moved here from Colorado with his family, and they were all told that, well, what you have to do is you gotta live in Hyde Park, and you gotta go to the Hyde Park School, and that's just what you gotta do. And he said, well, we couldn't afford Hyde Park, so we thought we were out of luck. And so, kind of by default, they ended up having their student tested, who ended up at Spencer Center, and he couldn't stop raving, not only just about the school, but very specifically about our principal there, Ms. Genakio, and how she had not, is she here? Okay, well, I'll tell you, I guess I'm giving a kudo, now you're here. But what I loved about it was, it wasn't that she was just a great principal, it was that she made their family feel more welcome in Cincinnati, and he said, quote unquote, "This is the best-kept secret on earth, Cincinnati." They since have settled in Madisonville, which I think we all know is a booming neighborhood in our city, which is really exciting. He loved the diversity of his neighbors, and said Cincinnati is light years ahead of Colorado where he came. So, thank you, Ms. Genakio, for welcoming a family who now call it what we all know it to be, Cincinnati is the best place on earth, and he said CPS is remarkable, but specifically that school should be a national model, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other kudos? Ms. Bowers?
I have kudos for Principal Porter, Taylor Porter, at Gamble Montessori High School, for hosting a wonderful breakfast for the president of Tennessee State University this Sunday, 8th to 10th. She raved about the hospitality. Deputy Superintendent Tiani Amat was there, and representatives from the school, and I just want to give a shout out to Gamble for representing CPS well, as well as our administration and the staff there.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I wanted to share some kudos for our superintendent and her leadership team. They were kind enough to invite me to their meeting yesterday, and I got a chance to meet them and see them in action, and that was Susan, Shawna, Paul, Sarah, Tiani, Dan, and Jen. And I think it's, you can tell when you meet a team of people that is very clear on what winning looks like, works well together, and can both face the facts when things aren't going well, and keep the faith that they will get better, and that was just abundantly clear about that group, and I'm grateful for you sharing your time with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other kudos? Final call? Alrighty, Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have several retirements this afternoon, from our certificated personnel, Eric S. French and Marguerite Ruttle, both teachers, and from our civil service personnel, we have Melanie Fish, Joan Cutte, Antoinette Stockman, Marilyn Washington, and Darish Williams. So we thank these professionals for their service to our district and our children, and wish them well.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Now, just in case nobody noticed, we, the board at our boardwork session on the 11th made a decision to move this item up on the agenda, so in case you hadn't noticed, we shifted our agenda items a little bit. And we did that basically because one of the things that we've learned as we do business is sometimes we get bogged down, and we should, you know, with the business of the board, and we, and our meeting gets delayed, and so we wanted to make sure the hearing of the public was put up on the agenda, to prioritize the need to hear from our public. So, and sometimes we have performances and things by our kids, we want to make sure that the kids could do their thing and present their talents, and then go home and get a good night's sleep, so they can come back to school the next day. So, we did move this up. Okay, so each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items when your name is called, please come to the podium, and I'll call you down in threes. Eva Komorosky, Julieta Lepido, and Lisbeth Lazaran? Lazaran? Come, come down to this podium, thank you. Come around.
For the new agriculture program.
Roosters.
Oh, roosters.
Yes, we can't hear, hold on.
I'm Dr. Eva Komorosky. I'm here to talk to you about Imagination Library. It's a preschool reading program I came to know in my work at Northside Health Center, Cincinnati Health Department Clinic, where I used to work. I understand your funding, we're hoping that you'll fund the program, and I'm here to strongly endorse this. It's really not possible to convey to you the joy and enthusiasm and thanks that people gave for the books that they received every month for their children, through this program from age zero to five. I repeatedly heard patients say, and families, they love their books, look forward to them every month. Themes of fun, sharing, fair play, optimism, overcoming obstacles, and love of one another were present in every book. There was a fine life lesson in every single one. The program provided a new mother or father of a baby the opportunity to cuddle their infant, while showing the child beautiful illustrations, introducing rhyme and rhythm, and exploring textures. A young toddler would be able to learn colors, numbers, body parts, and daily routines. It was wonderful that a two-year-old or three-year-old had a new colorful book every month, to page through and engage in pretend reading with some of the wordless book selections, in addition to pointing at pictures and sharing images with their adults or siblings. And it was absolutely astonishing to a four-to-five-year-old that someone thought of them every month, and sent them in the mail, a book. The educational benefits are apparent, but there were additional ways I found the program to be of aid to Cincinnati families. Reading the books together provided parents with a way to decrease screen time for parents and children, and provide moments for talking, which are so important to laying the foundation for raising a child, asking questions like, what made you mad, or sad, or scared, or happy today, and likely provoke discussions outside the book topics which have not occurred in the busyness of our society today. From an administrative standpoint, the enrollment form was easy to complete, either for parents or staff. The books are available in English and Spanish, and I do believe that some of our immigrant parents use the books themselves to improve their literacy. They're sturdy enough to be read over and over again, and even shared with siblings. I understand that the school readiness scores for kindergarten who signed up for this program exceeded those of preschoolers in previous years, but as I mentioned previously, there are beneficial lessons for preschoolers in these books that exceed literacy, which is a wonderful bonus. I thank you for the opportunity to come see you today, and speak to you about this program, which nurtures literacy and so much more, and I hope Cincinnati Public Schools will provide funds to ensure its future for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lepido?
Good afternoon, evening. I'm Julieta Ladipo, and I'm here on behalf of the Amen Mothers Group. It's All Moms Empowered to Nurse, and I'm here to talk to you today about Imagination Library as well. I have a two-year-old daughter, she just turned two, and we receive the books from the PPC at Children's, but we also receive the books to our Moms Group, and I just want to talk to you about the benefit that it's had in our family and with our child. She's two, she speaks in full sentences, she really just lights up when she receives the books at the PPC, when we're going to the doctor, she's like, ready to get her book, she can't wait. But at home, the library that we've collected has changed her just tremendously, like, we read every night, and also during the day, so she reads about three times a day, and she really displays reading behaviors, which is like the reading with her finger at just two years old. To me, that is, watching her grow and benefit from these books, and benefit from the power of reading at such a young age, is mind-blowing, and I just hope that you all will understand the benefit that, that brings to families that may not be able to, you know, go to bookstores and purchase books that they can keep within their home. We established a library, you know, before she was born, at my baby shower, but receiving the books keeps her up to date with different, you know, books that are coming out, but also, you know, up to date with where she should be at with reading, so we are ready for her when she does start attending preschool and elementary school, which we intend to send her to the multi-language immersion school. And I think this is really a way to, language in general, and being introduced to language at a young age, is, is a real way to segment into, you know, multi-language immersion. So, I just, I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on.
Hello, my name's Lisbeth Lazaron. I'm a physician in the College of Medicine, and a proud CPS graduate, Western Hills High School, class of 1973, so. And I'm here among this group to talk to you in support of continuing the funding for the Imagination Library, which is funded through the Reach Out and Read Coalition here in Cincinnati for children in our region. I'm one of the newest sites that was enrolled into this action, so for me, finding out about the wonders of the Imagination Library and the richness it could give to the kids in my practice was pretty much an eye-opener, both finding the exciting things I could do with kids, but also finding the level of lack that the kids in my practice had in regards to literacy, reading, and just the items that they would have that would allow you to thrive in the home setting. My practice serves patients in the Mount Auburn, OTR, Walnut Hills, Evanston, Avondale region. I'm a training center for family medicine residents from the University of Cincinnati and the Christ Hospital, and as part of that, we see people cradle to grave, so I'm often privileged to give parents coming in with their first newborn check, that Imagination Library, and this is often the first book this child has. I think this is great. And then I'm disheartened to find, this is sometimes the only book in that home. That blew my mind. Now, I know how, as a physician, to keep children alive, to how to keep, make sure that their vaccines are up to date, and treat their illnesses. What I realized I didn't really know how to do was how to allow children to thrive. And this program does it. This early introduction of books makes the difference. It moves the bar for kids who may struggle at school right from the start of kindergarten, to actually have achieved some level of equity with their more fortunate peers. So, kids who learn to read early, kids who are read to early, kids who just hear more words early, are gonna do better in school. And this is the resource that I think is gonna make the biggest difference, for kids to really achieve that same level, so our equity measure can move to a point where they get a step up to what they need to do. Now, personal story, as a child who was in the remedial reading groups in school all the way through the third grade, I can tell you that that change happened to me only after, in the third grade, I had a much older sibling who was assigned to read to me and read with me, and that opened the door. I don't think I would have gone to an Ivy League college, gone to med school, and now be a professor in the College of Medicine, without that reading intervention. This is the thing that I'm hoping will happen for these kids at an earlier stage, so, and allow them to be, replace me in my job as a professor of the College of Medicine, through the support they can give from this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Tanya Love, Latia Reese, Makina Starr.
I'm sorry, I'm kinda lagging. But I appreciate the Imaginary Library for my grandchildren. I'm a mother of six, and my daughter receives the books, and I just couldn't imagine her not having them books for my grandson. My son went to college. He wasn't the first, and he wasn't the last, but I could remember to my son, my son saying to me, he's stuck in the third grade, and I said, "You make straight As and Bs, how is you stuck in the third grade?" And he said, "I couldn't read." And I said, "You couldn't read?" He said, "No, I couldn't read." So, and I think back to myself, where I failed. So, I just hope you keep this program in place, so I could look at my grandchildren and say, "I absolutely did not fail." And I could say to you, that you helped me not fail, because it's a great program, and the books help, and that way, we can help somebody else. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Ms. Reese?
Hi, everyone, my name's Latia. I'm having a bit of anxiety, because I have my children with me, and I don't want them to be disruptive, but I'm here on behalf of Amen, which Julieta's here, and Makina's here as well, and it stands for All Moms Empowered to Nurse. Now, I didn't even realize that I had signed up for Imagination Library, and then I had just like, started getting the books in the mail, and it was so exciting to my daughter, just to be able to get those books. She's there, her name is Julia, she turned five, and I have a one-year-old. I recently just found out when they turn five, they don't get any more books, but we have this very large library at home, and I can tell you now, I wouldn't have that if I wasn't a part of the program. So, we go to the library, but you know, you check books out, and you don't want to have late fees, you have to take them back at a certain time, so being able to build that library at home for her is amazing. So without that program, again, that's not something that I would have for her, and I do want her to be successful in the future. You know, our children are our future, so if you want to feed into the future, we have to feed into the children, and... And providing those books at a young age for parents is amazing, you know? And it actually reminds me to read to her, you know? I read as much as I can, but it's not always stuff that she might want to read, you know? So I read, I read a lot out loud of things I want to read. But just having those books and getting them in the mail and her looking through them is amazing. So I appreciate the time for me just to be able to speak before you all to let you know how important it is that you keep this program around for moms like me. I'm a single mom who can't afford, you know, I don't really, I don't have money to be spending on lots of books. They're not super expensive. But again, there's so many other things that I could spend my money on. So another beneficial factor is that I don't have to pay for this big library that I have at home for her. So thank you so much and sorry about my little ones.
No need to apologize.
Thank you. Please just consider keeping that around for moms like me and other parents who, who need that aid and that help for their children to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Starr?
Well, good evening. My name is Makina Starr. And as she said, I'm one of the moms in the Amen Group, All Moms Empowered to Nurse. And I had a speech prepared coming up here. And my eight-year-old, she just turned eight on the 16th. She said, "Mom, wasn't, what are you doing?" I said, "I want to speak about the books y'all get at the hospital. They come in the mail and everything." And she was like, "Well, why, why are you writing it down?" I said, "Because there's so many things I want to talk about. I want to make sure I hit every subject." She said, "Well, what do you tell me when I got to speak to my teacher? Speak from your heart." I said, "Okay, okay, I will." She said, "Well, my daughter was born on Martin Luther King Day." And that always meant a lot to her. To be able, me, I was sheltered when I was little. I didn't really talk to people besides older people. I was raised by my grandma, my grandparents, excuse me, my great-grandparents. So I was never really around kids my age coming up. But my daughters are just so the opposite of me. They're like outgoing and want to be in touch with everybody. So the books we've gotten, we've accidentally gotten some that's been in Spanish, which has them totally mind-blown. Okay, what does it mean? Or how do I say this properly? Well, let's Google it so I make sure I say it the right, the right way. And they'll read their books. We go to the store and they'd be like, "Remember that word I saw in the book?" Excuse me, "Hola, hola, ¿qué tal?" I said, "Baby, okay, okay." So I just want to say the books, they promote so much life in the kids. They make them want to interact with everybody, know that everybody is somebody. We should never be separated or in certain categories because we can't afford things. Like she said, I'm a single mom as well. I'm a mother of five. And I love all my kids to death, but sometimes a sacrifice for a book compared to a sacrifice for some needle and thread so I can get their school clothes together, mommy got to make it happen. So it really means a lot that we can get these free books that the kids are excited about. That's promoting them to want to engage with other people, other kids, adults. And then the books, like Snowy Days, you get kids of different colors in the books. And they love that. They love saying, "Mom, we can have all kinds of friends. I can know anybody. I can speak to anybody. I can go anywhere." And it's all been promoted because of the books. Just giving them that extra drive, the life, the adrenaline. So I just want to say thank you. It's been a joy. We started getting it, I got a thirteen, I got a teenager, a thirteen-year-old, eight, seven, five, and two. And I started getting it with my eight-year-old. And when she got her kindergarten book, she definitely was ready and read every word from front to end. And it just really meant a lot. Because I don't remember personally myself if I was able to read that good at kindergarten. But I love the fact that my teachers, that her teacher said, "She's ready. She brings her books with her already. She's prepared. She has that drive." And it's all been because of the books we receive in the mail. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our final two speakers, Stephanie Terrell and Stefan Pryor.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Terrell and I wanted to talk about bus services. We live in Clifton and my children go to Rothenburg. But because we live within the mile radius, we don't have any bus services. And when it rains, it snows, it's hard to get for children and me being a single mother back and forth to school while it rains and snows. And I just think it's important that all children should be able to make it to school even during the rain and snow, you know? And be provided bus services because there is single parents with no cars, no family, no way to get these children to school. And I think that's something that should be really considered. Like I said, we live within the mile radius. So they do miss school when it rains, when it snows. Right now, I've got four children. And because of us, you know, going out when it's raining and snowing, they get sick, they miss school. And I have a meeting with Rothenburg for truancy because I've got four children. Two of them go to Rothenburg, two of them are not in school yet. And it's hard for me to get them in and out, you know, to school, back to school, you know, during it, during bad weather. So that's just something I have wanted to talk about. I think everybody should be offered a bus service. Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing?
Good.
All right. She need bus service for them kids. Come on, y'all. Y'all got the money, all right? God calls, God calls children, calls children a true gift and a blessing. And they are children are filled with joy and laughter. Our job is to make sure we cherish their gifts. Y'all jobs too. Not just to being parents, y'all job is to make sure y'all prepare the students for life. It's up on the board. Y'all need to start doing y'all jobs. Y'all been back, laid back too much, Ms. Laura. Y'all been doing too much sneaky stuff behind closed doors, allegedly. I ain't going to say you did for real, all right? But we need to wake up, y'all. You don't got cursive writing in schools. It's sad. You need cursive writing to actually to vote. Guess what? When the babies get older, they only know how to vote. You do cursive writing. It's sad. Y'all got the tools, Mike? Come on, man. Y'all got the tools to do this. That's why y'all got chose for this job. Y'all got to do it for real. Y'all doing it for play. Y'all there for y'all self or y'all there for these babies? They need the Imaginary Library. I saw a little baby walk around with a book. That didn't get y'all no question mark over your head? Y'all, y'all got to stop. Today, I give all y'all a D minus. Yeah, I'm grading y'all today. Look how that feel? Y'all got to wake up, y'all. We got people in the audience need help on stuff. Y'all are the bosses that can release stuff. Y'all get what, $657 million budget a year? Y'all can't provide bus transportation for these babies? It's a shame. Y'all got cell phone towers across the street from schools messing up their frequency waves? Yeah, I said frequency waves. Think I didn't know that, huh? I got a degree for none of this stuff. If I start educating myself, I learn this stuff of what y'all doing. Ryan? We got to wake up for these babies. Quit playing these games, y'all. Ms. Curlin Jones, president? We got to wake up, y'all. Ms. Eve? New members up there? How y'all doing, Stefan? I'm running for city council too, 2021. Yeah, my job is to tell the truth, not play these games no more. And we need to wake up, y'all, the reality. This, uh, this development y'all getting, thirty-three cent off a dollar off these developers? That money could have went to these communities. Some of that money. It can help these build culture centers. Transportation. There's a lot of people got transportation out here that, that do like Ubers. They can do it for these babies. Give out more contracts. Y'all got the authorization with these PINs. It's all the same as a PIN. Rain, this, this lady trying to send her kids to school. Y'all should be involved with this. Anything. Y'all made mistakes a long time ago, gave out emails, gave out emails on accident. It's sad, y'all. We got to wake up. My name is Stefan Pryor and I show to approve this message, all right? I love y'all. Nothing y'all can do about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Stefan.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. So moving on, superintendent, would you please introduce our presentation for the night?
Gladly. So within Cincinnati Public Schools, we are, the staff, the administrators, all of our staff, we are really proud of the work that the board has done over the last several years around its equity resolution and policy. So because of the board's vision, Cincinnati Public Schools is a trailblazer when it comes to equity. When I think back to the board's stance on our lottery system, which made it more equitable for parents to be able to enroll their students into magnet programs. When I think about the creation of Spencer, it was really grounded in equity. And it was grounded in the work that the board asked the administration to do to look at the number of children who are actually receiving gifted services and those who weren't receiving services. And so we're really proud of the board's work in this area. In addition, the board has been so bold as to call out racial disparities within the strategic plan and was very firm about that. And so we salute and acknowledge the board for their work in this area. So tonight, we're going to provide a presentation on the work that has happened over the last several years. And this is specifically about this school year as it relates to the strategic plan. Although there's a lot of tremendous work that has been done by everyone who's here and a lot of other people, we still know that there's more work to be done and are, we are enthusiastic to do that work, especially as we think about diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity. And so with that, I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Good evening. It is wonderful to see all of you and to have this opportunity to share with you the amazing work that is being accomplished by so many of the people who are standing behind me. I would be remiss not to acknowledge that equity belongs to each of us. We know that there is work being done in every department within our organization and at every school. Tonight though, we would like to, or this afternoon, we would like to specifically highlight the work that is being driven by this committee. So Jenny Malk will kick us off and explain some of the historical pieces around the Equity Steering Committee. And then you will hear from some of the other members specifically around their subcommittee work.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty, and thank you Superintendent Mitchell and all of the board for giving us this opportunity to come before you. A couple months ago, when I was in front of you about talent development, I said, "I'm super excited to talk about talent." Equity, though, is my passion. And so I'm so thankful for the opportunity to be with you tonight, or this afternoon. I do want to take a moment to recognize that a great deal of this work is done by volunteers in support of equity across the district with our Equity Steering Committee. And so some of our members are here with me up front and will help us present tonight. But if you are on the Equity Steering Committee and you are here in the back, could you please stand? Let's give them a round of applause. Members from the Equity Steering Committee that will be helping me to present tonight are Trina Levens, Brian Sertson, Juanita Johnson, and Chris Grant. So normally when I kick off a talk about equity, I tend to bring props. But I thought you all might think we're a little bit nuts if I rolled in here with like a picnic basket and lots of great food. Because when you think about equity and you think about its importance, I just want you to imagine, since I didn't bring the props, imagine you're at a buffet, one of those that has like the really great food, like a Las Vegas buffet. And you have one of those little flimsy floppy paper plates. And you're going down that buffet line and you're putting all that good stuff on top of that floppy plate. You're putting the mac and cheese and the ribs and the wings and everything else you can get on there. That floppy plate can't hold all the good stuff. It's going to soak right through that plate. You need one of those good sturdy plates, the expensive ones, to help hold all that great food. Equity is the plate. Equity is just like the foundation that holds everything together. We are doing amazing things in CPS. My family's in education and we swap stories all the time. But if we don't have a strong plate and a strong foundation grounded in equity, we can't support those things as fully as we'd like to. So as Ms. Bunty mentioned, it's important to remember that equity is the work in every classroom, in every school, in every department, done by every employee. But we want to talk to you tonight about the work that the Equity Steering Committee has done in relationship to the strategic plan measure grounded in student-centered decision-making. In reference to the, the goals around gap closing and looking at policies and procedures and the work that we're trying to do to support that as a volunteer committee. The first thing that happened in support of this about three years ago is we had a district-wide equity committee come together. It was a partnership between CAS and CFT. And we realized that the first thing we needed to do was understand the equity board policy. So we dove into that as a learning experience together. And when we did that, we realized we wanted to make sure we were all on the same page and we engaged in training together. Then when we did that, we realized we needed to focus our efforts. We all were extremely passionate about what we wanted to achieve, but we want to make sure we're going in the right direction. So we created this mission statement as an equity committee. And then with the creation of the strategic plan measures, we ensured that we were still grounded in this mission statement to make sure that we engage with all stakeholders to develop culturally competent practices that ensure equitable access, representation, and support so that all students and staff may work in environments that are free of fear and strive for excellence and create a sense of belonging. So everything that we have done is in an effort to support that mission. The first thing that we were charged with doing is taking a look at creating an equity plan. So we did a lot of research, talked to a lot of districts around the country. We also talked to other industries, healthcare particularly out on each of the coasts, about what they were doing. And we created an equity plan that had five main areas. The first was that we were going to strengthen our equity committee. And I'm really excited about the individuals who are part of this Equity Steering Committee. Each one of them bring a wealth of training and knowledge and expertise and a variety of backgrounds. Then we were going to start to look at training and development. We knew we had a lot of work to do in that area and we need to think about sustainability. So some of the trainings that you have seen come out through Living with Change and Woven Traditions and One Degree Shift are a result of that work. But we're going to talk about what we're doing for next steps with professional learning in just a little bit. The next piece was we are going to create an equity toolkit, a framework that you could use to look at any initiative, any program, any set of data, any idea to examine it for issues of equity. And the end result are action plans that can be implemented. We created that toolkit collaboratively after discussing and looking at what other districts around the country were doing. Then we tested it and tweaked it to make sure that it was effective and was able to be used. The next area that we want to focus on is an audit. And we'll talk about how we're going to approach that through an organizational profile, looking not just at accountability measures, but all different sorts of measures to determine where our areas of need are when it comes to equity. And then last but not least, we want to support communication and understanding of the equitable resources with the support of PLT and Ms. Wagner with the Equity Asks. That was also a part of this plan as well. So we had a committee, we have a plan, we had a tool. But now we really want to get some traction and get some work going. So now we're to where we are today. Because again, and I am so thankful for these people, volunteer committee meeting once a month. And they've done phenomenal things, but we wanted to get some traction and get some work done. So we have created four equity work teams. We didn't call them subcommittees. They're work teams. And they're groups of highly energized, passionate individuals who have volunteered their time to come together and focus on the areas of operational equity, performance management, and an audit, professional learning, and building staff capacity. We aligned each one of those work teams with a strategic measure, a focus for this school year, and also projects that are going to be completed by the end of this school year. We just kicked this work off with our orientation. When we announced this work out to the entire district, I had over 200 responses of individuals who wanted... When we announced this work out to the entire district, I had over 200 responses of individuals who wanted to serve on these work teams. Once we kind of clarified that you could only miss one meeting and that there'd be lots of work involved, we still had 76 people who could commit that time, which is, speaks to the desire and the want for this work to occur in the district. So now we're going to take a little bit of time and talk to you about each one of those work teams and what the focus is. So I'd like to introduce Trina, who will talk to you about the Operational Work Team.
Hello. My name is Trina Levens. I'm the Director of Purchasing. And while the Performance Management and Audit Team pursues more data to focus our next steps, I'm excited. And I must say, our Operational Equity Work Team is excited to address issues of equity in our current practice procedures and diversifying the pool of vendors that work for CPS. By the end of the year, our focus would be to clearly identify, communicate transparently the process to becoming a vendor for CPS and to create a proposal for a system that will not only create a plan for all vendors, but to increase and to attract diverse vendors with CPS. Now, I would like to turn it over to Brian Searson, who will talk about the Performance Management Audit Team, Work Team.
Hello. My name is Brian Searson. As Program Evaluator for the Department of Performance and Accountability, I'm excited to help lead the work of the Performance Management Work Team. Last year, we created and tested an equity framework and toolkit. And now we need to identify what practices and procedures should be applied to that framework. The team will focus on gathering data through an organizational profile of CPS this year and then apply that information to the framework using the six-step process outlined in the toolkit. One of our goals is to provide a list of recommendations to the Equity Committee to help prepare for the development of the next Equity Plan, which will be aligned to the strategic measures. Juanita will now share how the Professional Learning Team, Work Team, is supporting us in the area of equity and inclusion.
Good afternoon. My name is Juanita Johnson, and I am a teacher at Dater Montessori, leading the work of the Professional Learning Work Team. The last two teams shared the focus with you of what is happening in the classroom and who it is happening with each day. I would like to share the focus of the Professional Learning Work Team. We will research and create ways to support teacher development with explicit skill building on culturally responsive practices aligned to the Strategic Plan, the Equity Plan, and the CTES rubric. By the end of April, we will create a Professional Development Plan Proposal for the 2020-21 school year. We will also coordinate with curriculum, positive school culture, and the Curriculum Councils to identify current practitioners who are passionate about this work and strong in this area to build a network of culturally responsive teachers in our district and to develop strategies for connecting, observing one another, and being able to work together. Now that I've shared how we will support what is happening in our classrooms, I'd like to introduce Chris, who will talk about the focus of the Building Staff Capacity Work Team.
Hello. My name is Chris Grant, Principal of Westwood School. So Juanita just talked about how we will support what's happening in the classrooms. I'd like to talk about Building Staff Capacity Project Focus for the year so we can talk about how we will support those who are in the classroom leading this work. The Building Equity in Staff Capacity recognizes that research shows us that the largest impact on a student is the effectiveness of the teacher and that educators of color bring numerous benefits to our students. Our focus would be to create a sustainable culture to support the recruiting and hiring done by HR so that diverse staff are empowered with the tools and structures needed to support diverse learners. We first plan to do that by partnering with HR to create a plan to implement for the 2021 school year, in which we will support diverse recruits and diverse staff once they are hired. I'd like to turn it back over to Jenny.
So when you think about why all of these people are volunteering their time and why they're willing to take the time to get in the weeds and figure out a way to connect with every department and every school as much as we can, it's because our why are those kiddos up on the screen. Those are CPS kiddos. Our why are the children. Our why are our employees. Our why is because equity is the plate that will enable us to continue to do so many other phenomenal things. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Equity Steering Committee members are listed here on this slide in front of you. But we also have other people here. We have members, not everybody could come, because they also have been coming to Equity Work Team meetings this week. They were here until, I think one of them was here until 6:30 last night. But we do have some members of our work teams here. So if you are on one of the Equity Work Teams, can you please stand so we can acknowledge you? We'd like to thank you for your time this evening and for your support in this work and open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Board member questions. Mr. Messer.
Thank you so much. First of all, I think we must recognize the color purple. Thank you. And it does, and we just had a whole discussion on a facilities plan and they're painting this big room purple, the big common room, and everybody was upset about it. And then the space planner said, "Purple is the color of ideation." And I think what you're doing is ideating about the future that is better, that's more equitable, that's more inclusive. So thank you for that. And I want to give a special shout out for Trina because she's singing my language and getting our vendors and our spending and everything to be squarely aligned on partners who can help us expand our impact in equity and inclusion. So thank you so much.
Mr. Morosky.
I count myself fortunate to be a small part of this team and having started my day leading policy work at my job, talking about mandated implicit bias training for everyone in the prenatal care workspace in the state of Ohio, and then ending my day with this presentation, I'll sleep well tonight knowing I'm surrounded by good people. And something I want to call out that I think is unique, there's a lot that's unique about you all and the work that we're doing. And I appreciate, I'll speak for myself, the kind words of you all and Ms. Mitchell of the following the Board's directive. And it is our directive and it is our policy, but your leadership and your leadership and all y'all's leadership is noted. And what I find exceptionally great and inspiring about, I just want to put a pin in this and then I'll be done, President Jones, is I've long believed, so when we talk about the staff capacity and ensuring that we have more Black teachers, Hispanic teachers, I've long believed that that's never going to happen with recruiting efforts. And it'll only happen when our Black and Hispanic students feel comfortable and safe in school. Because if you don't feel comfortable somewhere, respected somewhere, you're never going to in a million years to say, "I want to go back to that place." And we're putting in so much effort to ensure that our kids do feel that way. I'm going to read every word of this eventually. And I know that our strategic plan speaks to that. And I just, I think it's really an inspiring thought to think about our students wanting to serve in the district and to give that back. And the groundwork y'all are laying is really important. It's probably the most important thing going on, and I'll stop because I'll start ranting. So I appreciate it. It's noticed.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, followed by Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to see that we're this far. I will take a moment, though, to say that I've proudly attended any number of sessions at PRM when, with you and with Woven Traditions leading the way, and I appreciate that. I'll also give kudos to Member Jones and Member Bolton because we were on the Policy Committee that wrote this. I did the flowery language and she was the editor, if I recall the roles very clearly. But I was also fortunate enough to go to the National School Board Association's meetings where indeed this whole equity thing was laid out and they showed how Canada was leading us and there were many states that were in. We did, it is true, to my great knowledge, I think, of the school boards in districts in the state of Ohio, we were at least in the first five out of nearly 700 school districts in the state of Ohio to have an equity policy. So I'm real proud of it. But having said that, I'm going to say what we've said for, I've said for a number of years, is that prior to this current administration in the national government, under President Obama and other presidents, there was a Civil Rights Division to the Justice Department. And the hardest-hitting efforts regarding equity actually come or came from the Justice Department. And they listed back in 2016, school discipline, restraint and seclusion, early learning, college and career readiness, chronic school absenteeism, education and justice facilities, and teacher and staffing equity. And that is where they said the education piece, where the rubber meets the road in schools. And I think the emphasis you have here on cultural competency is absolutely essential. But I think too, looking at just what they outlined prior to that, civil rights being, Civil Rights Division being eliminated with the current administration, we have made some great strides in early learning, college and career readiness. And I think some of the other areas need greater attention. For example, even the staffing piece around our district. Certainly, our school discipline, we need to be able to see those facts. So I'm thrilled that you're doing this and how far along you are here. But I would say you can expect this Board to hold the bar higher and deeper and wider because this is it. This is the essence of what we do. And I'm so glad we've got great people doing it. But I will tell you, this is not just a, it's hard and it's edgy. And it isn't all happy. So I'm thrilled that we have tough-minded people in charge of this. And I would recommend what they call the Equity Maturity Matrix to focus on. I think you're familiar with that. But I thank you for this. I thank the Superintendent for the leadership. And there's nothing more important, I don't think, to the Board than this effort.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, followed by Ms. Bates.
Well, first I'd like to thank the team for excellent presentation. I am excited about the work that you have done and the work that we are moving toward. A couple of years ago, at Gamble Montessori High School, when it was at the Gamble Montessori Elementary School, there was a community conversation initiative with Jack Joes and some students at Gamble and parents and community members around disproportionate discipline referrals. So that cultural responsive practice, I think, is very important in addition to hiring, recruiting. And I think I spoke to Julie Indiglacio, am I saying her name correctly? Thank you, about that when I went to Cincinnati in a day or it was a recruitment effort, I think, at Aiken. It was two different days. And I had concern that there was not enough diverse teachers there to, with the population of students that we serve who look more like me than not. So kudos. We're moving toward, moving forward on this, and I'm excited to see what the, how we progress.
Thanks.
Yes. I'm looking at the first two paragraphs of our Board policy. And pretty much what it's saying is that's fancy language for eliminating the achievement gap. And that's our goal. Now, my concern, I mean, and I know that this is in, you know, you're just starting your work, is the audit tool, and will all of this result in what we want in the first two paragraphs? We don't know that. There's, you know, the list of what we think will happen. So what I'm going to suggest to Ms. Bowers and Student Achievement is that you request regular reports on eliminating the achievement gap, however, in whatever form that is, because that's the only way we're going to know if what you're doing is getting the results you want. And if these checklists, if that's really what you need to be doing to eliminate the achievement gap. And so that's something that's very appropriate for this Board to monitor. And if the Student Achievement Committee would take that on, I think that would be very helpful to moving this effort forward.
Yes. Mr. Lindy.
Thank you. I wanted to say, first of all, thank you. And just, it's a very exciting presentation. And it's a body of work that I think couldn't be more important to CPS. And I want to thank you in particular for volunteering your time. Specifically, just a couple reactions on my end. I thought the breadth of how you're thinking about applying equity was particularly impressive. That yes, it's about hiring, yes, it's about instruction, yes, it's about purchasing, yes, it's about all of those things. And I think being able to see the concept at so many different parts of the organization is just very exciting. Just thanks. I think in the future, just as you keep moving on this, some things I'm personally excited to continue discussing with you all are looking at outcomes. Because I think the way I was always taught to think about equity is impact rather than intent. You know, what is the actual reality on the ground on all these things we care about? And wherever we're starting, I'm excited to look at, you know, from what to what? And how much closer are we getting over the next year, five years together? So I'm excited about that. And I think just one reflection on equity from past job experiences is that it feels like an important part of this is getting shared ownership for everybody. You know, like this is clearly an incredibly committed group, including guests in the audience, and that's great. And I'd like to think of how can our Board help make sure that every building leader, every teacher, every team leader, you know, every bus driver, you know, like every person within CPS can apply these same ideas to their part of the organization and feel some ownership for that. And if we can help, I think we'd like to.
And then a final comment, me. I appreciate the work that you've put into this, and you all look good in purple, by the way. And there are some things that Board members said that resonate with me that I just want to tap into for a second. I like shared ownership. The Board shares in that as well. Ms. Bolton spoke to holding the bar higher, deeper, and wider. I believe, and I think we all believe, that when you see things through an equity lens, the accountability for that is top-down, bottom-up, side-to-side, and through and through. And so one of the things that I hope we can do as a Board, it's given me an idea for our next Board work session, is to, for the Board to talk more about how we govern through an equity lens. We cannot be disconnected from the plan that you all are working on. And while I think we have a dynamic policy, it is so very important that we better understand as Board members how we govern through the equity lens and how we align with where the district. I think we align in terms of how we see the work, but in terms of how we do our work, we have to make sure that we're aligned with that. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate the comments made by Board members, and I agree with what's been said. Thank you again.
Thank you.
See you soon. Great conversation. Thank you. All right, moving on to Board Matters. We have, number one, the first item is the LSDMC Handbook Revision for Students Voting. I'm looking this way. Somebody put it on the agenda? Mr. Morosky?
So I did not put it on the agenda, but I had offered to move, to amend, to amend it as being a voting member to change it in the first place. I had offered to move to change it back so that students could vote. But I think it came out of, and I'll look at Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, I believe Board staff sent to the Student Achievement Committee members a draft of how that could read based upon this whole year of discussion. Ms. Davis, did the Student Achievement members get that item?
Not the last one.
Yesterday?
No.
No.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It didn't.
So it'll be, it would ostensibly be on the February 7th meeting agenda then, and which point we could talk to it and then bring it back to the full Board.
Yes. And if I could just comment on that, I'm not sure. Yes, and if I could just comment on that, I'm not sure how it got on this agenda, except that I think we said it a couple of meetings ago, that this is when we might be doing it. Maybe that's happened and we are, efficient board staff keeps a record of what we say we'll do when. But yes, there's an item and I think it captures a number of the discussions, both full board and also in committee and by community members. So if you've got that, then if Student Achievement can look at that proposal and then bring it back to us, that we can do it that night.
Certainly.
Thank you. All right. Imagination Library, Mr. Morosky?
Well, I appreciate that, Ms. Jones, and how appropriate. I'll start with your words. An opportunity to govern through an equity lens has been presented to us, in my opinion, as you all know, through Imagination Library. I've been talking about this with you all for about a year. So I really, really appreciate, in all sincerity, the opportunity to dedicate a Board Matters Section to this topic so that other folks besides me who support this, and I think there are some folks who support it besides me, can speak up and folks that still have concerns can speak up. So I really do appreciate it very much because I know I've been talking about it a lot. And so hopefully, we can put it to bed in a positive way today. The only thing I would like to tee up for the conversation, if I may, is that we had a number of concerns that were, I think, valid to the point that I was willing to back off a little bit in 2019, latter part of 2019. In your packets, you got a letter from the Auditor of State putting to rest one of those, which was the proper public purpose. You also got a sheet with some numbers on it that hopefully look much nicer to you than the last cost of 330 some thousand. So as you can see with the commitment from the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education, and that commitment would come obviously in agreeing to pick up the tab and ideally in some form a resolution of support, which I can talk about later after our discussion. Cincinnati Children's Hospital is willing to pick up the administrative costs. The Governor's Office is willing to pick up half the cost of the books for any district that wants to be a part of it, bringing the cost for the rest of this school year down to $43,000. Going forward, that cost is $129,000, and that's without a potential support of another partner. So that number could be cut in half if we were to be able to make a commitment that we're willing to provide free books for every zero to five-year-old living in our area. So I give this to you, again, I would love to provide the opportunity to some board members to offer their support if they have it, other concerns, if there may be some. And with that, I'll leave with my last point in that I know we get asked often to do a lot of things that are, seem like good ideas. I'm sure if all of us put our emails and texts and Facebook messages together per day, we'd have 100 different good ideas a day that we get asked. I would, I would submit that this is different in that we had a group of folks willing to pay for it and prove its effectiveness for three years. We have Children's Hospital agreeing to pick up the tab and the state of Ohio willing to pick up the tab, and we know that it's working. We also know from survey results led by Imagination Library leaders that parents are reading, on average, 20 minutes a night, four or five times a week, which is really dramatic as far as how a child's brain is developing, et cetera. So for what I think is a reasonable cost, we could really do a lot of good for a lot of kids in the city.
We're, we'll open the floor, but I just want to ask a clarifying question. Did we not make a decision about this? Or is this, I'm just, I thought we...
We never made an official decision on it.
Okay. So this, what, I believe what we asked the superintendent to do was to identify the kids who were enrolled in the district and we agreed to pay, we agreed to pay for, fund Imagination Library for the kids that were enrolled? Is that, I'm asking for clarification. Is that what we did?
I think we kind of just let the conversation die. And it was brought up that there was a potential of paying for fourth and, four and five-year-olds.
We are paying, I know I saw this somewhere documented, we are paying for some kids, we are paying a, something to be part of this project, for kids who are enrolled in our district. Is that not correct?
So at the, at the direction of the board, so I believe that the board agreed to pay for CPS kids, actually for next school year.
Next school year.
The administration came back and we looked at, and we gathered the number of kids who are currently CPS students and asked for the calculation of how much that would cost. And I think it was approximately $17,000. The administration came back and said, it's, it's $17,000, we can pay for that for this year for this year's students. So we came back with a compromise to not only do next year, but this year as well. I did send that information to, I believe it was Mrs. Henry, and I didn't receive a response back to that email as related to paying for this year, the $17,000.
Okay, so we're paying for enrolled students this year, $17,000, and we agreed to pay for enrolled kids in the amount of $42,000 or something?
So we agreed to pay the $17,000, but never received any communication back that that was acceptable.
Gotcha.
And so we had not paid anything, but did have the conversation with the treasurer about making that payment. And there wasn't an agreement, to my knowledge, about the 42 or 43,000 for next year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer, followed by Ms. Bolton.
Yes. I absolutely support Imagination Library, not just because Dolly Parton has given millions of books to children in Appalachia under a very similar program that has had meaningful results. If you listen to the podcast and talk about that very specifically. You know, I have to say, when we originally saw or heard the dollar amount, it was like, oh, ooh, that's a little bit. However, you know, I think it's been crystal clear by the governor that this is a priority for both he and his wife. And I've heard now from many people totally unrelated to the district or any of this conversation about, oh, at the, whatever the Regents or whatever that group is, the governor's wife came in, her whole topic was talking about Imagination Library and the impact that she believes that will have, and that they want to provide part of the funds, but not all the funds, so they want local participation. So that big dollar amount to me got significantly less because they are going to cover half from funds. Now, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. And then, you know, I'm all about asking our partners at Preschool Promise to collaborate on this. Because I'll, I'll say, yes, I believe children should have books. I don't know the last time that I bought a book, but because we have friends with means, people gave us books during all the showers and all this, and we have a library. And because of that, I get one brought to me every night before bed that I'm there, and that is just a part of what we do. I cannot imagine a home that does not have books. However, I'm also interested in this for a very different reason. And that is, as a sales and marketing person, yes, I care about the kids that are at CPS today, but frankly, I'm more concerned about the kids that aren't at CPS. And what I think I learned through this process that got my ears, as somebody who wants to ensure all children have access to the best public education and that public education dollars are coming to CPS, and often, young parents, I've learned very clearly, don't even know sometimes which schools in the neighborhoods are CPS or not a CPS school, that if we engage with those families during this program, and if I understand that we can brand not only the materials, but provide information like, oh, by the way, you're six months from preschool registration, here's how you do it. Oh, by the way, here's the list of all the schools now that you're out of preschool that you're eligible. And guess what? Here's how the lottery works. And so I don't know of another way to do what we call at J&amp;J, direct to consumer marketing, that's so targeted to those early parents who could have many questions that we can go directly to them and answer. And guess what? If it doesn't work, great, we measure it. My prediction is the, the money spent here, which I would bet is far less, so $60,000 would be our part, which is .00008571 of our estimated annual budget. But that is a more direct and targeted focus than going to billboards that may or may not have families driving by them.
Okay. Ms. Bolton, followed by Ms. Bates, followed by Mr. Lindy.
The issue is not whether or not we want our children to have access to books or we want to increase literacy, that's what we're all trying to do. My issue is, to whom do we now say no? Because this is setting a precedent. How many churches want us to do similar things? How many private organizations want us to do similar things? And I'm glad we've, we've delayed and waited and discussed this because the first bill we saw, or the first estimate, was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think our delay in our discussion has been helpful for us. My reservations are, it's a dangerous precedent because you're going to have to say no to people you don't want to say no to. Second, my limitation is, I don't want to spend the money on children that are not enrolled in CPS because that's another precedent that is very, very difficult. If they're in a CPS preschool, or as you said, preschool promise, that could be part of what they're doing financially. So I would prefer that it be kids that are in CPS. I think you're right about the possible marketing, but I think we could, we could also figure out other ways to do that as well. But the precedent is dangerous and it needs to be, we need to be spending on children that are enrolled in our schools. And I think also, some of these promises that both the governor and his wife made, have made, some of that's been backtracked a bit. And it may require ultimately a policy and administrative guidelines as to whom we say yes to. But right now, I worry about precedent and non-CPS students and families receiving services from CPS.
Ms. Bates?
And I have a proposal here that's going to be totally off the wall, but what else can you expect from me?
What's new?
What's new? Okay, everyone take a look at our desks here, our tables, and all the printed material we have out. We probably have about $200 worth of printing on our tables, right? And you multiply it by the number of meetings we have. Well, look at this, all color.
I love it.
So my, my extortion to the board is that we go paperless. Save the $1,000 a month, $12,000 a year, that's one quarter of the way there. I mean, really? That's a small thing that we can do to, for this, towards this purpose and make that commitment. So it takes care of the agenda item that I've been pushing for many years that we fully use board docs, yet...
I wrote that down, Ms. Bates, right there.
Board docs, now you know board docs because you've been working with, with OSBA. So I know that Ms. Jones knows board docs. Eliminate paper, save a ton of money, and let's go for it.
Okay. Point noted. Ms., okay, hold on, Mr. Lindy, we'll come down.
So I wanted to just share the understanding I have of the history of Imagination Library and check that what I've got is accurate. Because I think the, my understanding of what the history was is what informs my perspective on this. Happy to share where that's coming from and invite other people who have other information or know something I don't know to share it with me if I'm wrong on that. But my understanding was that the original proposal, which I think predated Superintendent Mitchell, but I'm not 100% sure, involved the idea of some private philanthropists funding a certain number of years to test whether or not the program had the kind of impact with children that we wanted to have, with the idea that there would be a commitment of public funding that would carry that forward if what showed up in those three years of research was consistent with the outcomes that they wanted from the program. To me, to your point, are we, first name or Mr. or Mrs., I'm still getting this straight.
Member or Mr. or Mrs.?
So Member Bolton. So what Member Bolton was sharing...
Sometimes it's worse than that.
I'm trying to learn how we do things. What, what Member Bolton was saying about what's, what's to stop us from, you know, the next group that comes along, I think if the next group has three years of great data saying this makes an impact on children and exactly one of the places that we want to have an impact, it gets me listening. And again, I'm new, you may have an experience I don't have where that's actually harder than that, but I keep thinking of the hard work this group of people has put into all the years of this to generate the strong results. I'm also, I haven't looked at that data, so I'm assuming that that data is real and it shows good outcomes. But if, if that's, if that's the accurate history, it seems like the burden would be on us to hold up our part of the deal. And so that, that, just so people know where I am, that's what leads me to want to support it. And if I'm wrong about any of that, I would invite your feedback.
I, I think we are, given the last conversation that we had in board meeting, we are holding our end of the deal. Let's, let's be transparent about this. There's a political push for us to fund this, and it keeps resurfacing. Am I right? I mean, am I right or wrong? It, it keeps resurfacing and it's not going to go away until we make a firm decision, one way or the other. We either fund it or we don't. Now, having said that, I, there, there's, there's a couple of things if I could, I don't know, are you done? I didn't mean to...
No, no, this is great, yeah.
Okay. So, so there are several things that I wanted to add, and we got two other comments here, sorry. I agree 100% with Ms. Bolton. First of all, we talked about the fact that it was set a precedent. So somebody said, I believe Mr. Morosky said, big dollars become less. So we have all these huge funders that want to fund it, but guess what? They have the liberty of backing out of it when the monies dry up and it's going to land in our lap for kids who don't live in the district. We're not opposed to funding it for kids who live, who, who are enrolled in our district. And so it does set a bad precedent. Secondly, when the big dollars go away, long-term sustainability becomes an issue. And I, in, in terms of branding, there's no guarantee that kids who live in a different community at birth are going to come to this district, that the last thing their families are thinking about when they're born is what school they're going to go to when they're three or five. That, that's my perspective. And then finally, my question is, why are we the only district that people are approaching? We had a speaker tonight who lives in St. Bernard. Why are, why aren't other districts being asked to fund it? If these families live in their districts, why are they not being approached? They are? Okay. I didn't know that. And are they contributing? Okay, so, okay, Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. I just want to make a point that I'm always in the arena of data and connecting. and connecting...
I call to order the January 22, 2020, business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone, and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Wagner. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Mrs. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones? Here, thank you. I need a motion to revise the agenda to include the item listed under Board Matters for tax abatement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, January 6, 2020, tax budget hearing, January 6, 2020, organizational meeting, January 6, 2020, business meeting, January 6, 2020, business meeting, board work session, January 11, 2020.
So moved, second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Committee reports, Mr. Morosky, please present the January 17 Policy Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you, President Jones. I will do my best to follow in the footsteps of my esteemed former colleague, former board member, Ozzy Davis. Oh, there he is. We had a great Policy Committee meeting, January 17, at 3:30 p.m. First thing we did was elect the chair, me. Second, we decided on our committee schedule, we will meet the first Friday of the month going forward, February on, at 2:00 p.m., 2:00 to 3:30 p.m., the first Friday of the month, 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. Oh, at 3:00, sorry. Student achievement is 2:00 to 3:30. We're meeting 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., I apologize. So we reviewed our Policy Committee work plan. Beginning two years ago, we began going through all of the policies of the board, to make sure they were up to date, make sure ones that were no longer relevant were excised and removed from the books, and make sure, just kind of generally, that we were still in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code, as per our board bylaws, state that we have to do this every three years. So we continued the work that was begun in 2018 and 2019. We're in the 8,000 series, or operations, and we're moving to the 7,000 series, or property. We also then moved into the Policy Committee mission statement. The ad hoc committee had recommended that each committee have a mission statement, or just sort of a general outline of what they do, so that the public, if they choose to go to our website, to say, "How can I engage with these people?" You don't just go to this sort of black hole of, "Where do I click and click?" Not that our website is a black hole, it's getting better. But it's very difficult to just kind of say, "I want to engage with this committee because..." And so, we decided that our homework, Ms. Bowers, Mr. Messer, and myself, would be to go through our bylaws, look at the Policy Committee directives, and come with potential mission statements at our next meeting. We then, as noted earlier, went through our review of policies.
I can touch everybody who's not in our school buildings. Even the preschoolers who are in our school buildings, and I know for a fact, they don't always stay with CPS. So that still is a jumble. And I'm good with the wellness of our kids. I used to work for Every Child Succeeds. Reading is important. I counted a number of books when I went to visit parents, who, how many reading materials they had, so that is true. But that was the responsibility of a social service component, not the education component within accounting. So for me, if I can touch the students that are in my building, I am for Imaginary Library only, because I can follow data that is a clear feeder to progress and success in reading and academics.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones. So a few things, a lot of things, rather, were said that I'd like to respond to, if I may. First of all, Ms. Bates, I love all of your outlandish ideas, and I especially like your paperless idea. We do have a lot of paper. Maybe it could be an opt-in, opt-out, because I know some folks up here really like their paper, too. There you go, Ms. Bolton. Also, and I kind of led with this a little bit, and I think Mr. Lindy sort of highlighted it. I fully respect the precedent piece, I really, truly do. Because again, there are a number of proposals that I hear out there, just like we all do, that are great. I think this is different. I do think it's different. And in that, we've had people willing to pay for it for three years. We had an agreement that said we would take it on. Now, yes, it was from a superintendent who left. I've never once used that as my argument, because my argument is, this is right for kids. And we know that if we start seeing the books at four and five, it doesn't have the same impact as birth to five. And for me, it is very much an early education piece, which is why I'm also a huge supporter of preschool, our partnership with preschool promise, et cetera. So I do think it's different. We've also gotten presentations since I've been on this board that show the effectiveness, that show increase in lap time, show increases in kindergarten readiness scores. We've had presentations in committees. We know that the data to that piece speaks to the effectiveness of the program. And lastly, it was insinuated there was a political push. I assume that means there are people in the community who signed on to an agreement that said, "We agreed to pick up this tab," which again, I've never used as far as my push in this, but we did sign an agreement. Now whether an MOU is a glorified napkin, or a legally binding agreement, we could talk about all day long. But if that's what you mean by political push, then sure there is. There are people who've said, "We're going to do this," and I don't think the word "political" is a bad word. All of us ran political campaigns to get up here, so I think it's rich for anybody to say, "Oh, politics is bad." However, the push for me, and the reason I've been so bullish about this, and gone to such great lengths to try to cover all of the different bases that folks up here have had problems with, and I think we have, for the most part. There are still some disagreements, and I respect those. My push has been that birth to five, reading. As a former English teacher, with two degrees in English, who specializes in this, who's speaking to Mount Airy families tomorrow about the importance of reading, I reject any insinuation that this is about anything other than that. I also reject that it is not a good program, and that it's not somehow, you know, good for us to work with the kids who may or may not end up in our district. We know that, at this point, close to 80% of them will. And so I find it hard to believe after, or for me, I'll speak for myself, I would find it difficult to vote against something that says we will give 12 books a year for free to 10,000 students, at a cost that could be $60,000. Out of a $657 million budget, it would be very difficult for me to vote against that. And I know we're not necessarily voting tonight, but I would like to ask for a resolution of support, and I would like to ask for board members to vote on this, on the 27th, if possible, our first meeting in February, because Every Child Capital has agreed to fund this through February, then it's over. And I'm not, I'm not willing to just say the four and five-year-olds, because we did have an agreement. This is an effective program, it's transformative. And to President Jones's point, there are districts around the state that are doing this. We're not, this isn't unique to us.
Are there districts in this area that are supporting it? Or Cincinnati Public, in the 22 that are down here, in this area, where geographically the funders of this, the funders of this program
Yes.
serve the greater Cincinnati community, are the school districts that are in those communities part of the funding structure of this?
No, it would be us and Children's Hospital, and ideally preschool promise.
And that's my issue. I mean, that, yeah, but anyway. I'm sorry, go ahead, you done?
I'm done, but I would like, I would like to ask whoever it is, and I can do it during assignments, that we have some sort of formal item.
Yeah, we're going to move to that. I just want to make sure, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak, and then we'll decide what the next steps are. Okay, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I do think, I do think that's a clarification, you know, just to make sure that, you know, as we're looking at this, you know, where children live in geography, you know, that, because it is truly a recruitment tool. And, you know, if a child picks XYZ Academy, and because, quote unquote, the parents say, hey, they didn't know, they didn't have anybody in the district that was guiding them, or whatever, and they say, "I'm going to go to that school because it's close to my house." If we were able to track, just based on what I think I know, let's say they go to a charter school instead of coming to us, if we recruited 20 kids, would we almost pay, we'd more than pay for that? 20 extra kids? We'd more than, the return on that investment of putting information into their hands? And are there other engagement things that we could do? And as it relates to kids who are not in our district, I think the other thing that I know, since I've joined on the board, is how many kids end up back in our district, because they were at a charter school that failed, and then they're behind, and they need to be caught up. So I always see them, not at CPS, as people we should be still courting, and trying to recruit. Because I do believe, in my heart of hearts, we offer a much more complete package for families. And maybe not for everybody, for one reason or another, but for the majority of families, I think we have a much more comprehensive offering. And I have learned that we may not always be at the top of mind when people are looking for that first choice, for that first child. And I think this helps us get there in a very direct-to-family way.
Ms. Bolton?
I just want to put a good word in for the school district. The school district has supported kindergarten, half-day, full-day, when the state would do nothing. And we've done that for decades. So we have a tremendous record regarding early childhood and early grades. We lead the state regarding preschool at age three through up, have established a private partnership that is historic, to have preschool be funded by public dollars in private vendors' facilities. So our record on early childhood is not surpassed by any district in this state. The issue is, are we supporting kids or families that aren't in our district? And to whom do we say no to? But we have a proud history in early education. Maybe this is the extension of it, I don't know. But right now, nobody can fault us on early education.
So, given, and I think everybody's had a chance to weigh in on the conversation. I think if we could just bring this in to kind of figure out what our next steps are. Mr. Morosky is suggesting the possibility of a resolution, and that's certainly something that any one of us can do, is bring the resolution to the table. But even before that, I think I understood the superintendent to say that we've already agreed to pay this year in the amount of $17,000. Nobody has reached out to you regarding that, is that correct? Is that what I heard?
Not to invoices for the $17,000.
Okay. So, you know, maybe the opportunity to reach out to them and say, "We need an invoice," or whatever needs to happen, that we honor what we said we were going to do. I also heard the superintendent say that next year, for next year, there is a plan in place. So I think what we need to, if I'm understanding, we need to honor what we said we would do at this point. And then, secondly, the resolution that Mr. Morosky might introduce for that. Is that where we are? Okay.
Yeah, and if, so I'll do that during assignments for a resolution of support, to pick up the tab for the full amount for the remainder of the school year.
You don't even need to sign it, just do it.
I can just write it, okay.
Just do what?
Just do it.
I'll sign it to myself.
Oh, just do the resolution, gotcha, okay, all right. Okay, but do the resolution, gotcha. Okay, are we good on that? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to our resolutions. Yes.
Just to clarify, sorry. No, I am good on that, and I can get on that resolution, that's no problem. The means by which I would request that to be on the agenda for Monday, because I can have it done by then, certainly. Just let Phil know. Okay.
We didn't have to do a 48-hour waiver, because it didn't come out of committee, and it didn't lay over.
Right.
Okay, so do, yeah.
Yes. Yes, I, in error, went straight to resolutions, we need to...
It was Freudian.
I agree. So, yeah, this will be fast. What we wanted to do is do an update on the meeting that we had with city council, and put that on the table, share that with our public, talk about what our, and summarize what our options are at this point. Now, I don't know, you know, at what depth we want to have a discussion. There's always Monday's meeting, because I know a couple of people have to go. My preference is to have everybody here for that discussion. But let's just do an update, and I've asked Mr. Messer to give us an update. And Mr. Hoing, if you could come down, and Mr. Hoing will kind of summarize what the recommended options are. And then, Treasure Wagner, if you want an opportunity to weigh in on this, we'd appreciate that as well. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and I was at the council meeting along with members Bolton, Bates, Lindy, and of course, along with the administration team, who was there. And then, well, I was getting into that. And then, and then the queen spoke. Because, you know, and not being funny, but I really believe that what President Jones delivered is exactly what was on my heart, that I... President Jones, um, delivered is exactly what was on my heart, that I was trying to raise my hand, and they said he can't deliberate, which I totally agreed with, but I want to do some clarification. Um, you know, it is kind of a, uh, a very complex mess, and, um, things were happening in social media today. I don't know exactly what, but further conversation, and people have different ideas. Um, you know, my, my personal belief, uh, is that, um, there is so much consternation that I think people are anxious for us to come, uh, kind of across the board with something from this board. And I don't mean necessarily people at council, but I think people in the community, I've heard on social media, "Hey, this board is in a leadership role. They've been engaging people all year." And, you know, my personal belief is that we go back to what we originally talked about, and that is, um, I thought, a five-year agreement, um, that was at the 33%, and not going through another drug-out year of going through a third party, which we had talked about, or talked about getting on the same page of numbers and all that, but to do an annual audit, which I know was also part of the conversation, because there was no tracking in the old agreement. Um, and as Finance Chair, I remember saying, "Well, can we just get an update of all the, the agreements to date that doesn't exist?" So I called David Mann, who was, uh, Finance Chair, and he said, "Oh, let me, I'll get that for you. We surely have that." And I have the email. Nope, unfortunately, we don't have that. There is no audit. We can't tell you exactly. We could probably pull it some way, and then nothing ever came of it. So I, I believe that we just say, "Hey, there's been so much going on. There's at least three plans coming out of City Hall," that I think that based on, huh? Maybe four?
There's like five.
But my opinion is, um, you know, if we, if we include that audit conversation, we say five years, 33% with that annual audit, that would allow us to work with our administration, their administration, um, uh, to bring that together.
Yes. Um, and before we ask Mr. Hoing to speak, just so folks know, pretty much our audience, most people are gone, but to update, uh, we did go, we actually sat, uh, up where City Council folks sit, um, and it was, it was very clear that, to me at least, that there, there seemed to be no understanding about all the communications that had been sent, um, from us. I mean, there were lots of questions about things that we had talked about probably months ago. So, uh, we had to rehash a lot of that. And Jen Wagner was there to present the data, because what they wanted was to have a conversation about how we arrived at the 33%, um, the basis of that. And, uh, they wanted the opportunity to ask questions. Um, and, you know, um, and Ms. Wagner can speak to that. Um, so, you know, that, um, well, I'll leave it at that. And Ms. Bolton, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Wagner to weigh in.
Yes, I would, um, uh, agree with, uh, Member Messer, and I know that there are a few council people that, um, are interested in, um, even the 33% over five years, if there is some kind of audit working group annually. And beyond that, the last time we talked and met, we were unanimous that it had to be 33%. We were, uh, not interested in any delay in this, and we were also ready to, um, move on if the city didn't want to agree to anything, to create a Turk for ourselves if necessary. But I do think that, back to them, it's a 33% five years with an annual working group audit. And I think that that's what we need to do. And I am very much opposed to a third party, uh, delaying this in any way. Thank you.
Okay. Treasure Wagner?
Um, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to, um, make a few comments about yesterday. One being that the process was not very transparent, as they required my PowerPoint to be to them last Wednesday. They did not indicate that their city administration would be there as opposing presentation. They did not share their presentation with me. I couldn't hear what they were saying yesterday because of the microphone thing. Um, they made some comments that were inaccurate. Um, the first being that we refused, at some point, I think I heard them say, "We refuse to meet with them," when it was in fact just the opposite. After our first meeting where Dan and I were down, went downtown, we had Mike Sobel on the phone. Um, we sent the file, the very, in fact, I tried to send the file from my phone, but it failed, so I sent it to the, to Sam the very next day of all of Mike's work papers. Um, we invited them to come up to the Ed Center for the next meeting because we had free parking, and, um, Ms. Paula Boggs-Muthing refused because they were in the middle of their budget development cycle. I said, "We are too. This is important. We should meet." They chose not to. I, I'm almost positive, we invited them to a second meeting, because Mike actually came in and sat with Nathan and I when we were trying to, um, work on their math. Um, they keep insisting on using a state foundation formula that's been reused, that's been, um, ruled unconstitutional four times. They just refuse to acknowledge. And in doing so, in their math, I keep explaining to them that they keep making mistakes using the property wealth factor, which is actually, the state shares dependent on three economic indices that, um, off, kind of offset each other. So as property, as the abated properties come out, economic development typically increases the income of the city, and so that would offset the, the increase of the abatements. Um, and not only that, you can't take one district in isolation, because the whole formula is relative to the rest of the state. So something had happened in Cleveland and make us incredibly rich with nothing changing in our district. Um, so I've explained that to them. They also cannot use each year in isolation, um, because every year is dependent on the revenues of the year before. So they, um, I've explained it to them, I don't know, at least three or four times, and they won't change their calculations. They did not share the math of how they came up with their 5%. I still have no idea. Um, my slide was up there, was pretty clear. I mean, it's just simple math. Um, and Ernst &amp; Young, when the Cincinnati Business Commission hired Ernst &amp; Young, the Parthenon Study for our financial efficiency study, they confirmed that we were losing money on the Bateman deal. And so, um, you know, I would welcome one of the big accounting firms to do the annual audit, um, because I know that they will do it with integrity. And, um, so I fully support the, the annual audit. I can't think of anything else I wanted to say about that, but it was very, it was a very disturbing experience to be there. Um, and, uh, and I'll leave it at that. Dan, you want to add anything to that?
Yep. Can I make a point before you start summarizing this? Um, I, I believe all of the board members received the recent version or copy of, uh, uh, Councilmember Pastor's recommendation, and I just feel a need to say to my colleagues and to our administration that, um, two councilmembers reached out to me yesterday. Ms., Councilman Pastor was one. Um, and this was his thing, and I was very persistent in telling him that we were not in agreement with this. So for him to put in there that there was a willingness to engage, that there were members who were willing to engage in this neutral third party, I did say to him that this was not likely, um, if not impossible. So I felt like you all needed to know that. So again, um, that was skewed. Now, the other conversation, um, was with Councilman Landsman, who, um, I believe proposed, and maybe Daniel will summarize around that, around the 33% piece. Um, you know, one of the suggestions that he had when talking about whether or not there was a third party was Parthenon. So that's interesting that you mentioned Parthenon. So I just thought I'd throw that out there.
So just to be clear, um, I'm acknowledging the need for an annual audit, not
Not a third party.
Not negotiations.
Yes, and I get that. Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Hoing?
I don't, I don't have much to add. I, I think it's been well summarized. Um, you asked me just to review some of the proposals that have been made, and I really have, I'm not exactly sure, as we sit here today, that, that any of these are formal proposals to us. Uh, you know, Councilman Landsman started, I think, with, uh, his balanced approach forward, and that was a, that was a 25%, essentially continuing the same percentages. Uh, I think it was Councilman Smitherman who proposed, uh, 31%. Uh, I understood that Mayor Cranley, uh, was supporting a 33% last week. I saw it on TV. Um, the, uh, uh, January 22nd proposal from Councilman Pastor, again, I, I don't think this is a, an offer from the city, but his, his proposal is to continue the agreement. Um, you know, the only piece I would say on continuing the agreement, and, and one, we've said before that we would continue for up to 30 days, provided we're compensated during that time. The only thing I, you know, upon some reflection of that, at the end of the term of the agreement, the city pushed through 15 new, uh, TIF districts that, so, so I have some concern really about continuing the agreement, e- even for a short term, because of a concern that there might be some new agreements that are pushed through. Um, uh, and then, of course, there's the option of, of not, not, no deal at all. So I, I'm not categorizing any of those really as city proposals, because they haven't come from the council as a whole.
Right, exactly. Okay. Ms. Bolton, followed by Mr. Lindy.
I would, I would just like to restate that I think that the, we should communicate, uh, an interest where we have consensus, and I think there is a consensus on the board, again, unanimous, a 33% five years, which is what we've really wanted all along, in part because of our five-year forecast, and that we agree to some sort of an audit throughout. I will, with a caveat, say, if we recall, uh, Mayor Cranley's press conference, first of all, I think it's, it was, that was fine that we did that, and it's fine that we did whatever we did yesterday. I think
I don't think it...
It, it all looked terribly confusing, but the, the, the reality was, he kept saying, he said twice in that press conference, that over 10 years, the, the district would be made whole. He said, "It was always about over 10 years." He said that twice, and that, that it might take 10 years for the district to be made whole. And I think we might want to review that, his comments, because that's what he was thinking. And he talked about a 10-year lifespan for it. So, but I mean, I know we're in favor of five years. If we're confident with our numbers, that the 33% is it, if it looks like we do that and, and our whole annually, uh, I think that's, uh, where we should be. Five years, 33% and an, and an annual audit.
Okay.
To Mr. Messer's point.
Mr. Lindy.
Um, what I was hoping I might do is just ask a question, and then depending on what the answer is, I may or may not have an additional thought. Would that be appropriate? I'm sorry. That's okay. Um, I was just saying, what I want to do is ask a question, but depending on what the answer is, I might want to. Um, so this is, um, uh, my second week in this job, I think, maybe two and a half weeks, and I'm still learning a lot. But the, the question I can't answer yet is why, why we don't, why we aren't open to the idea of a third party. Assume for a second that it's one that, um, every, every, everybody would need to agree that we trust them. I don't, I don't know who that would be. But the, the reason I'm asking is, um, I've been super compelled by the math that Jen shared. Seems right to me. Like, seems like if it's that clear, and I think it is, surely that's what an independent study would validate. The, the only thing I can think of is, I think, the point you raised, uh, Ms. Bolton, which is like, what happens in the interim, you know? And I think that sounds valid. Um, and I think, given all the good faith that we seem to have done in the last year before, it was all, all before my time, um, seems appropriate to, uh, ask for something in the interim that puts us in a good position. Um, but I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why we'd be against a study if we're really confident that, that, that it would show what we're, uh, arguing for.
Yes. Ms. Bates?
I'll, I'll answer that. We've had a study. We have contracted, Ms. Wagner, correct, with Mark Sobel, who is an expert in, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike Sobel, who is an expert on school funding, consults with several numerous school districts across the state, so Jen's numbers could be confirmed. And the city won't accept that study. And yesterday, we heard them say that we did not give them access to Mike Sobel, which is, I'll be kind and say untrue, because they've had his phone number. Uh, they will not accept the third-party study that we contracted for.
Has it given us any reason for why?
They said that we didn't give them access to Mike Sobel, which is not true, because Jen gave them his phone number, an email, and, yes.
I mean, that sounds compelling to me.
They didn't like it.
It seems like I'm missing something about why, like, why should that not be enough for them? That's the thing I can't figure out.
That's exactly the point. So keep on getting answers until they get the answer they want, is what I'm thinking, and that's not acceptable.
Okay. So I know we, we gotta bring this to some closure. Ms. Bolton, you have a comment? Mr. Morosky, do you?
They have to, they have to trust their administration, and we have to trust our administration, and as long as they're trusting theirs and ours is, uh, saying something that is different than theirs, that's why they're rejecting it. And it is based on the premise that they believe that they understand school financing better than we do. That's absurd. So I think, again, moving on, it's 33%, five years, annual audit, and if they don't like that, then the reality is, all this flurry of activity, they could have been doing this eight months ago, could have been doing it nine months ago, three months ago, and all of a sudden, the dead end, right now, they're doing it. And I would say, to Ms. Bates's point, if they don't like that, then indeed, we will have our own Turk.
And, and Mr. Morosky wants to make a point, but I just wanted to add something to you, because I agree with that, and we're gonna close this out, because we have a couple members that need to leave, and we want to put a motion on table. However, you just find, you said 33%, five years, and then you said, which I think wording is crucial, annual audit working group. And, and to me, that means each party brings to the table somebody they want to represent. Now, if they want to bring somebody from wherever, it's up to them. They get to decide.
And I think that's a term that then shows that we're ready to not just have a third party do an audit, but that through this whole process, we're working together to do it.
We're working together. Mr. Morosky, final comment?
Final comment. Um, I feel like I'm on Groundhog Day. Uh, I don't know. Uh, so I'll respond directly to you, Mr. Lindy, and my frustration has come from the fact we sat in this room over a year ago, and the City Council recommended, this same committee recommended, there should be this, like, third party, and I was like, "That seems all right." In the interim, we have spent a year, uh, negotiating with ourselves, essentially. Um, we threw out two resolutions, a couple letters. Jen was sent with Dan to present to their, their folks, given the same numbers. And then, and we're told, while this was happening near the end, um, it was said a few times, "Well, this is, this is better, this is good for the school district. We don't need the deal," which is not true, because now all of a sudden, people really care about this deal. Because once it ended, people were like, "Oh, no, the deal, John Cranley said it best, I think. It provides certainty." So I'll, again, speak for myself only. My frustration comes that now, a year and a half later, the City Council comes with literally the same exact thing they said in here, and we've been, spent a whole year saying, "We'll do it." We have backed off so much, and this board will tell you, I was not in favor of our initial couple resolutions. I was like, "This is a bit much. We're shaking the city down." But I, you know, we did it, and we, and we eventually, I can say, we negotiated with ourselves, which was hard, because that doesn't matter. Uh, we need somebody else to give us something, and finally Greg Landsman did, and then Vice Mayor Smitherman did. And so it's just a little, it's hard for me to swallow, I'll, I'll say, um, because it doesn't sound that, but like, why, because we are confident, why does it matter? And it's just, they want, to quote Ms. Bates, I think the answer they're looking for. And they won't drop the state funding piece, and it's just, it's not germane to this conversation, and that's, we saw what happened when we said, "We'll send you a presentation," where our treasure was seemingly set up. And I'm afraid the similar thing would happen. That's my fear.
Okay. At, at this point, um, let's move forward, and, um, I'm gonna entertain a motion from, um, Vice President Messer around this action.
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion that we propose to the city that we enter into a five-year agreement, effective immediately, with 33% that includes an annual audit working group.
Ms. Bauer, second. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Well...
Ms. Bolton?
Just to build in, I totally agree. I wish I'd had a chance to second it. We could all second it. I think it's super. I don't know if you wanted to, Mrs. Bates, did you want to say anything about without that? There would be a Turk. There would be a Turk?
Oh, yes. I think it's important to say that. We stated it at the meeting yesterday, that we were prepared
That's a good point.
To move forward with the Turk. So I think, I, thank you. We need to add that to that. So could you restate the motion with that included?
Okay. So I move that we propose to the city that we enter into a five-year agreement effective immediately with 33% that includes an annual audit working group. Failure to reach this agreement, the board will move forward with a tax incentive working group to process decisions going forward.
Review group? I don't know what it's really called.
Tax, review, what is it?
Tax incentive.
Review committee.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. So the motion has been restated. Is there a second? Okay. Ms. Wagner, any discussion? Any final discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Done deal. Thank you. All right. Okay. We're going to move on to resolutions. I understand a couple folks have to leave. Ms. Bowers, present the following resolution for board consideration.
Before me, I have a resolution, Amending Board Policy 2370, Credit Flexibility Educational Options. I present this resolution as written.
Second? Second. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
Yes, I have a very brief report in addition to the written report. So each board meeting, I like to highlight our students, and I would say that if there were a headline, it would say CPS prepares students for life through great partnerships. So let me tell you why I think that is really important, not only to me personally, but also to our kids. They deserve the opportunity to discover their passion and to be able to find what they're good at to be successful in life. When I think about, what are the three core messages that I would want anyone to take away from this very short presentation? This is about opportunity for our kids. It's about what happens after graduation, and it's about great partnerships. And this lines specifically to our strategic plan in terms of student-centered decision-making and community engagement. So many of you may be aware of the Zoo Academy has been an inspirational point within our district for a number of years, to be exact, 45 years. CPO highlighted the Cincinnati Zoo Academy that allows our students to get experience with animals. And what's really interesting is that many of the students who are actually in the Zoo Academy, upon graduation, go and work for the zoo, which is very exciting. This partnership was established in 1975, and we're really proud of that partnership that is actually making sure that our kids get to a place beyond CPS after graduation. I'd also like to highlight our partnership that is preparing our students for health care in terms of the world of health care. BI3 is a program that was initiated by Good Sam Hospital to provide our students with unique experiences in the world of health care. So we're very excited about this opportunity as well. Again, this is about access and opportunity for our students. And then lastly, I'd like to be able to highlight that NKU has agreed to give five scholarships to CPS students. These are full tuition, room, and board. And again, this helps our students be able to discover their passion, live out their dream, and create a life beyond Cincinnati Public Schools. For those of you who are watching, who may be interested in this scholarship opportunity, the deadline for applying is February the 15th.
Wow. Great. Okay. Is that it, Superintendent? That's your report? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the Superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
I recuse on item G and yes on everything else. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Any inquiries or updates?
I have
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
One, I have an inquiry, just to follow up, since we received some information again about the census, and it's in full swing. Two things. One, some months ago, we talked about the district making sure that we had a representative in whatever kind of committees or discussions were taking place regarding the census. And I would like to make sure that that's happening, or if the administration can keep us abreast of whatever is happening regarding census. They had a kickoff, I think, today. I think it's critically important for our funding and for the city's funding. The other is a, it's kind of a strange update. It's a kudo to our HR department, but it might not be a kudo to our schools. I've had the privilege of meeting Ohio's Teacher of the Year, who now has qualified as one of the four Teachers of the Year nationwide. And she applied here and made it through HR, but didn't make it through the two school selections. And she is incredibly impressive. So again, reviewing how we do this, she also is a person of minority status, and multilingual and what have you, and has been a refugee. And so I just, it's just something that I'm proud of HR, they recognized it, but somehow in the sites, the two different sites, it didn't prove valuable.
Thank you. Any other inquiries or updates? Mr. Morosky?
I was going to do this just in assignments, but I think it's fair to ask what the board's appetite might be before I just dive right into it. I think I know where the board is, but out of respect. So the state government has not figured out the voucher thing yet, and it's a mess. And, you know, Forest Hills Superintendent, Sam, I'm not asking that, this is not where I'm going with this, Ms. Mitchell, but I thought it was kind of cool. The Forest Hills Superintendent sent a letter to every single family in their district saying, with Tom Brinkman's number and their state senator, and said, "Call these people and tell them to figure this out because they're misrepresenting our schools, they're misrepresenting how we perform, and they're doing it to siphon funds out of your kids' classroom and redirect it." I thought that was kind of cool. So again, not suggesting that, but what I am suggesting is that we, as a board, put our name behind an op-ed. I'm pretty sure that Ms. Worley drafted one before she left. And/or, and/or some kind of statement, a resolution of opposition, because this is terrible. And this, the way, the way the grades are working out, schools are getting dinged, more money's going out, my wife and I, as you all know, are about to have a child, and it is unconscionable that with our two-income salary, which is not great, so no, it's not much, but we're fine. We're fine that we could qualify to send our kid to a private school is bananas. So I was just curious what the appetite would be, if it could be maybe put our name behind an op-ed. I think the inquiry would print it and a resolution perhaps of opposition. Or a support, rather, to do the right thing, whichever.
I like both ideas.
Okay.
I don't, in terms of the op-ed, maybe that, our superintendent certainly, because I know that a lot of superintendents across the state are voicing their, you know, disagreement. Ms. Bolton?
I do know that the OSBA and a few other organizations that would be supportive of our problems with it have created a working group that is now going to have statewide meetings throughout, or regional meetings. So I know that OSBA and a few folks are spending a significant amount of money with lobbying on it. There will be hopefully some kind of a short fix, supposedly, but the long-term fix is devastating. And if we did an op-ed, I think that would be great. I think it would be even greater if we could find just a suburban district to join with us on that, be a small one or a large one, a wealthy one or whatever. I think if we, if there's a working effort, I think that would make an impression. So it's just not us being upset. I think that would be good, whether it's Winton, you know, Hill, whatever.
Okay.
Winton Woods.
Yes. Superintendent?
So I was with a group of superintendents last week, and one of the superintendents who is in a neighboring district, touches our district or comes up to our district, stated that there is a gentleman who told her he was living in her district, that he specifically moved to the Cincinnati Public School area. He had no intention ever to send his child to a CPS school, but to be able to take advantage of the voucher program.
Absolutely.
So there's a definite
I'm sure that's happening, yeah. Okay. That, I think those are good ideas, good suggestions.
Assignment time? Would that be an assignment?
Yeah, we'll make an assignment, but it's, yes. Ms. Wagner? I just wanted to give the board an update that when Lauren Worley sent her email last week alerting this, I reached out to both George Glover and Eric Kearney about, because I had not seen the definition of the short or the long term, and I want to make sure that we're clear on what those financial implications are before we
Exactly.
Do a resolution or anything like that. So they were trying to set up a conference call tomorrow morning with Representative Blessing. I think I just saw a message that may have happened, but as soon as I get some more information, I'll certainly pass it on.
Thank you. Okay. Just, just one quick thing on an update. The February 5th meeting is an off-site meeting, and I think, Superintendent, we're going to rely on you to, it's not an assignment, but you usually plan those at a school, so we can find out as soon as possible. That would be helpful. Okay. Yes, Mr. Lindy?
Just one request, whether it's for this off-site or a future off-site. I had a great conversation during the campaign with the city manager for Gulf Manor, and he asked expressly if at some point we could have a CPS board meeting in Gulf Manor. And I know nothing about how hard it is to schedule these things, and I don't know if that is a very easy ask or a very tall ask, but I wanted to share it, and if there's any work that I can do to help make it easier rather than harder, I'd like to offer.
Thank you. Okay. Any assignments? Mr. Morosky?
I would assign that if this resolution exists, which I'm pretty certain it does, I saw some draft of it. I'm sure it's floating around in Lauren Worley's department. If that exists, that if the Superintendent could look at it, put her own spin on it, and we'll have it in the bag, as it were, pending the call with Blessing, because again, I don't want to get ahead of the Treasurer, but have it on hand. And then also, Mr. Hoi maybe could help throw some words on paper for a potential resolution impending what Treasurer Wagner finds out, or I can do it, but Mr. Hoi tends to be better at it than I do. But an opposition to this expansion of the voucher program, or if anyone up here would rather volunteer to do it, if that makes sense. So Superintendent?
I think there are some sample letters, too, that we could
There are.
Signify.
Yeah. Does that make sense to you? Is that all right? Thank you.
Okay. Any other assignments?
I have just a, and I, for the PRM solution, if there is one, this may sound strange, but looking at the property over there and what it, buts, what is the adjacent property and how the adjacent property, property has the wooded area, slight wooded area, a low-level area, and a little tiny fire station, and then also the golf course, country club, whatever, literally, it's not in their fairway or anything. It's just, if we could just look in a creative way, that there might be a way to add. I think we've been, we've been anticipating there's no easy way to add to the building, but is there a way to review that property as to whether or not it can be addressed? Not taking up the parking lot or whatever in the houses that are close, but is there a way to configure the low level and perhaps some minimal amount from the golf course? Just so we have that as a possible option, or no, for sure, it's not.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
And that GM of that golf course, and just for me, a friend is also a CPS parent.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Any other assignments? Okay, having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.